Alright, good evening. Good evening. If you could, if you could come on in, we have some seats available. Come on down, we're about to get this, well, we are getting this meeting started. Okay. It is after 5:30, we are calling this meeting to order. It is the special meeting of December 12th, 2018. And as a reminder, if you would like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker's request form. They can be found in the back over there. This time, we're gonna be doing roll call. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Tesari.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Here.
Mayor Potem Rigby.
Here.
Mayor Lorimer.
Here.
Alright, this evening's invocation will be presented by Pastor Ed Moreno of New Day Christian Church.
Excited to be here. Alright. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this just truly exciting city. Father, I thank you for the leadership that you've raised up for us. I thank you for the reelection of our mayor. Father, I thank you and just praise you for all that Adam Rush has done for this city for so many years. And I know that he's stepping out of this role, but he's such a vital part of this community. And I just pray, God, that he'll know just how much a blessing he's been to this city. I thank you for our newly confirmed city manager, just the amazing staff. And Father, I just pray continued growth and that your continued wisdom will be in our leaders as they lead this great city through the end of a great year, 2018, and launching into an even greater year in 2019. I pray that they'll feel and will all feel your presence in this place as this meeting goes on. In his name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Alright, we have a pledge, our Pledge of Allegiance tonight. It's gonna be led by Girl Scout Troop 82. I think they're in the back there. Come on down.
Good evening.
Perfect. You can sit into this microphone.
Good evening. Please join us in the Christian flag. I mean, pledge, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. That was great. Great job, girls. Okay, I wanna make sure. No certificates, okay. At this time, we're at the public comments portion of our agenda. So, any members of the public wishing to make public comments may do so now, but you'll have to submit a public request form, a public comment form. Have we received any comments?
Yes, we have received two public comment forms. The first one being from Kristen Rush.
Okay. Excellent. So, as a reminder, please address, this is to everybody speaking, please address your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, members of the audience. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Lorimer and city council members. I just wanna take a few moments of your time this evening. Not many people know that Adam's nickname in high school was Mister Hustle. It certainly did not refer to his speed on the field as he was a lineman of formidable size, but to his drive, determination, and work ethic. This is something that has followed Adam throughout his education, career, and then political life. When I met Adam our senior year of high school, I knew he was a young man who had big goals and would certainly achieve them. I have always deeply admired this quality in my husband. He could never be accused of not putting in the work. In early 2007, shortly after we were married, Adam and I joined the Eastvale Corporation Committee, a small group of individuals who had committed to working toward the incorporation of a new and growing area we called home. Adam spent a lot of his workday at the Riverside County Planning Department, working with developers in planning and growing this area. One evening, Adam went to an incorporation committee meeting without me and came home to announce that he was now the membership and fundraising chair. Because, and I quote, "Someone needed to do it, so I raised my hand." For the next three years, much of our free time, evenings and weekends, was dedicated to incorporation. At that time, we purchased our first home and welcomed our first daughter. When Adam told me he wanted to run for city council in 2010, which I knew was inevitable because Adam is passionate about all things politics, I was excited for this new endeavor. When incorporation passed and Adam won his first election, we were over the moon excited. He had only hoped to have the incorporation pass. To be elected was just icing on the cake. To watch a new city begin and grow has been nothing short of wonderful. I watched my husband grow from a hopeful 29-year-old, first mayor of a new city, to a strong and confident leader who is respected by many. After Adam announced he was resigning from city council, anytime we attended an event, people would tell me I needed to convince him to continue on. It is a wonderful thing to hear from other elected officials and community members that my husband is a great leader, someone who listens, responds, and gets results. Someone who doesn't shy away from hard issues and handles controversy with dignity and respect. As our family has grown, Adam has recognized the need to step away from political life. Our children need the time and energy only a father can give. If we measure time with our children in election cycles, our children will be grown off on their own in four or five of them. The time with them is precious. Adam, you have shown our children how to be a public servant, sacrificially giving of your time and energy to make the world around us a better place. I know this is not lost on them or me. I read a quote recently by the late George H.W. Bush, "Any definition of a successful life must include service to others." I am certain that you will continue to seek opportunities to give of your time, look for ways to serve others and support our community. Congratulations on a job well done. I'm so proud of you.
Very well said. Thank, thank you for sharing those comments. Mr. Aguilar?
Our next speaker is Lee Peterson.
I don't know how I'm gonna come behind that. Thank you, Adam. My name is Leah Peterson. I'm a public affairs manager with Southern California Gas Company, and I'm here tonight to speak to you about a balanced energy approach that can work for everyone so that California can reach its climate action, greenhouse gas regulations that are required by 2030. Recently, in the last year, the California Legislature attempted to pass several bills to eliminate your choice of natural gas as one of your energy choices and require that all buildings, both industrial and residential, become all-electric. Electrification sounds like a simple solution, but the challenges are big and much more complex than that. Southern California Gas Company has over 22 million customers. Natural gas is affordable, is your lowest utility bill, is clean, burning fossil fuel. You use it to heat your water or hot water with, to cook with, to heat your homes, and 60% of all your electricity is generated using natural gas. Consumers want choice. The Restaurant Association supports natural gas as their preferred cooking source. If you were to upgrade your home to all-electric, you would have to replace your natural gas stove, your furnace, your hot water heater, and upgrade your electrical panel that could cost upwards of $7,200 per home. Renewable natural gas will help us reach our goals, our climate goals that California is required and mandated to do. Green waste, which is currently used to dump into landfills, is now being recycled and reclaimed and create, and it is used to create renewable natural gas. Animal waste from cows, and there's nothing more natural than the back end of a cow, what it produces. But animal waste is also being used to turn into renewable natural gas and is used, currently being used, to power trucks, buses throughout Riverside County. It is also being made available to our consumers. The point is, you shouldn't have to choose between doing what's right for the environment and what your family can afford. And with a balanced energy approach, you don't have to. If you would like to find out more information about renewable natural gas or about energy efficiency programs, you can go to soCalGas.com and find out more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like we're at the end of our public comments. So, that takes us on to item number four, and that is city council reorganization. So, starting with 4.1, that is a presentation to outgoing city council member, Adam Rush.
You gotta pull the lever so the balloons drop, Brian.
I know. Well, I was just gonna say, what ditto what Kristen said? And then I will have to repeat it, 'cause I wrote an even more eloquent speech since. Just kidding, Kristen. So, we wanna thank Adam. It's been a pleasure working with him for the last eight months, and, and he's been here for eight years. Served as, as Kristen shared, the first mayor from June 2010 to December 2011, helped develop the first Eastvale city budget, which is a very important part of a working government. Worked to procure the city's first motor officer. So, for, if you got a citation in our community, you can thank Adam if he chose the speed. He presided over many major development projects such as the Lidl Master Plan, Costco, Amazon, the ranch-specific plan in the campus. So, if you're eating at a good restaurant, he even, way back when before he was on this, he helped approve this shopping center, as I, as I learned earlier. So, he served on many regional boards from the Southern California Association of Governments, Riverside County Transportation Commission, Riverside Conservation Authority, Metro Link Board, Western Riverside Council of Governments, Air Quality Management District, and there's a whole bunch of acronyms there that I won't mention. But he was instrumental in bringing the following major construction projects, I-15 Limonite Avenue Interchange, the I-15 Corridor Improvement, the Hamner Widening and Hamner Bridge. And, and most recently, he helped us get additional funding to extend Limonite past Archibald. So, his, his greatness here will be experienced long after he leaves office when we can drive across the Cucamonga Creek Canal in a couple of years. So, we are going out to design for that here shortly because of the funding he helped get at Western Riverside Cog for that. Adam served on the city council for eight years and has presided over a balanced budget each year and saw the removal and the ultimate return of the city's vehicle license fees from the state of California when, when our Sacramento state took our money away from us. And, and then Adam and his wife Kristen have lived in Eastvale since 2009. And since he's been in office, they are the proud parents of three children. So, if you become a council member, you might have kids as a result. And so, ages nine, seven, and four, all raised here in Eastvale. So, thank you very much, Adam. And I have about, I have about a dozen plaques down here that I need to pull out from underneath the table, so. The first one is from Senator Richard Ross's office, Senator District 31. And this one's from, from Adam Rush. I'll put it up here and we'll give it, we'll get it to you in just a second, 'cause I don't, there's another one here. With our deepest appreciation, this one's from us at the city of Eastvale. It's a little bit smaller. Good things come in small packages. We don't have the budget of the state of California yet, but we have a balanced budget. And we have a, and we have a surplus. And a reserve. And a safe city. So, so we also have the United States Congress House of Representatives from Ken Calvert's office, the 42nd Congressional District, right here. So, there's another one. He's not gonna have any wall space that they're gonna have to build in addition pretty soon. We, we have another one here from the Board of Supervisors, from the county of Riverside, from Kevin Jeffries, Chuck, Marion, John, and Manuel Perez. So, there's that one. We have a used fire extinguisher from Calvert. No, I'm just kidding. No, that one's just down there in case of emergency. But, you know, Adam, you know, it's been a great honor, and I'm sure your fellow council members up there have a lot of great things to say. But on, on behalf of everyone at the city hall, we appreciate everything that you do to help support us in what we're doing and, and, you know, with our big strategic planning effort that we did earlier this fall, we have a lot of great things set up for the next couple of years to achieve and some high lofty goals, which I have no doubt that will exceed Eastvale's expectations every day because of the work you've put in. So, I appreciate it and thank you very much. And so, you know, with your family out in the crowd and they show up to many meetings to watch their dad proudly up there. So, thank you very much. And, and, you know, he was the one that challenged us to get into the city hall by September 12th. He bet against us, mind you, but, but, but we got him in by September 12th so he could have a council meeting, or actually about six council meetings before he termed out. And so, he, he told me I'd really like to be in our new council chambers before I term out. And so, I, I promised them we would, so, and we did, so. But thank you very much, Adam.
And to be honest, I love when my family comes, but I think they're here for the cookies.
Can we take a photo of you two together?
Sure.
Mayor Lorimer, before we continue, we do have a public comment speaker, and that's from Harry Dimon from the Eastvale Chamber.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Harry Dimon wanted to come up and present something. Excellent. Harry, come on down.
Thank you, sir. Honorable mayor, city council, and city staff, and fellow citizens. Thank you for the time. And Adam, I really want to, on behalf of the Eastvale Chamber of Commerce, and I got most, probably most of the board members here as well, we want to thank you for your service to the local businesses. Without your help, we wouldn't be here where we are today, bringing all this, here, small business to big businesses into the city. And number 17, you are a major part of it. And we made it twice because of your help and support. And I know that the city will continue to with that big direction that you're leaving behind us, where you're not going nowhere. I think we know where you live. I'm gonna knock your door when I need ya. And thank you for your support to the community and to the businesses as well. And behalf, on behalf of Eastvale Chamber of Commerce, we got a little small plaque for you.
Right here? Over here, please. Just right here, right here.
Alright, one, two, three.
I completely forget about the pizzas during the incorporation meetings, you know. Yeah. Thank you for reminding me.
Do you guys wanna get up and take a picture of him? And you can hold half of his plaques? I think we wanna say some things too, but we're gonna take pictures first. Before the mascara runs. Adam? Anybody can hold the flag. Okay, we're ready. Everybody look right here. One more time.
And then right here. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Okay, I'm gonna, Brandon's gonna start off.
Well, Adam, I wanna thank you for your time and service, and I appreciate everything that you've done for, for the city. Coming in as a, as a new council member two years ago, you, you're on a long and you're still on a learning curve of, of, you know, how to operate as a city council member. But I think Kristen said it best. I, I think on, on some big issues that we faced, Adam addressed, you know, the residents and our developers and, and certain situations that came up in the city with dignity and respect. And, and I remember as a, as a council member, when you spoke, I paid really great attention about how you delivered messages to certain, you know, in situations. And you were very poised, you were very, very professional. And for me, it was a good learning experience for me, coming in brand new and just kinda seeing how, how the veteran would operate, right? And, and I always kinda stuck closely to you. You wouldn't know that, but I, I kinda stuck to how you spoke to everyone and how you addressed everyone with such respect. So, for me, I'm grateful for that 'cause it was a good learning lesson for me to kinda see how a professional would, would deliver his message. So, thank you again for everything you've done.
Joe?
For, for those of you that have heard this before, and please indulge me, there's a lot of people here, and I'm, I'm sure many of you don't know, but I'm gonna go back to that same one. How many of you have heard of Dr. Benjamin Rush? He was a signer of the Declaration of Independence. Well, Adam Benjamin Rush is a direct descendant of Dr. Rush. And I'm, I'm sure your, your forefathers would be very proud of the way, or your ancestors would be very proud of what you've done. You know, he, he was a founder of a new city. He was actually one of the people that laid the groundwork for what we're living in today, just like Dr. Rush did. And you've done an amazing job. And, and Brandon's right, you were very professional. I remember whenever you first became mayor, and I'm sure it was very intimidating, but you, you did an amazing job, and your institutional knowledge is gonna be sorely missed. I hope that we're able to carry on and get the jobs done that need to be without your expertise. So, we, I have a feeling we'll be resourcing you in the future. Thank you again for your service, Adam.
Todd? When we had State of the City, we were going through a thing and we were talking about, we were gonna introduce Adam and we were gonna say his last State of the City. And I, I was like, no, we aren't gonna say that. We aren't gonna say that this is his last State of the City. And Adam kept on, yes, we are. This is my last State of the City. And we kept on going back and forth. So, unfortunately, it was his last State of the City meeting as a council member for right now, but he'll still be heavily involved in the community. One of the things, and I don't mean to discredit Adam, but having a family of myself and seeing the toll that it takes, the time that it takes away, I just wanted to thank Kristen and her family for all that they've sacrificed and that they've given up to allow their dad to serve. I, I think that a lot of the time that it goes unnoticed of what a spouse goes through and what the family goes through to allow their spouse to serve a, a community. So, thank you so much for that. Thank you, Adam, for all that you've done. The last thing real quick that I just wanted to share with the residents, a lot of the time you look at a city council member and you think of what they've done in our community. And yes, Adam has done a lot. He's, he's been a tremendous asset to our community. But as you're on a council, you're assigned to different regional committees and things like that. And Adam has done an outstanding job, not only for our community locally, but for our community in the region. You go to a meeting and you say, oh, I'm with Eastvale. And they're like, oh, you mean with Adam? Or with Mr. Rush, or, or things like that. So, I mean, he has done a great job for us here in the city of Eastvale, but also for our region. So, thank you, Adam, for your service. Thank you, Kristen, and your family for allowing your, your dad and your, your husband to serve us.
So much has been said, and all of it true, and you're well-deserving of it. Your, your time in office, it's, well, I'm greatly, I'm grateful for it. I, I've appreciated not only, well, your service, which I know you were not doing for me, you were doing it for the community that you love. But you, you're commitment, your sense of duty, your input constantly when we have tough decisions before us. I value, I have valued the input that you provide, and it is greatly appreciated. The discussion about one of our founding fathers, Dr. Benjamin Rush, he, I, I was watching the John Adams the other night. And I kept seeing him, and I, I thought about texting you, but it was rather late at night, so I didn't. Anyway, long and the short, I'm gonna miss you. And I truly appreciate serving with you as a colleague and, and your friendship. But most importantly though, I wanna give you a little bit of time to speak, but we, we do have to be out of here by a certain time, so. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Sir?
Yeah, never give a politician a microphone. No, I will be really brief, and you're right, a lot has, a lot has been said. I, I appreciate it and value it all. This, this time has been the, the most rewarding, but also at times the most challenging and stressful professional thing that I've ever done with respect to the sacrifices that my wife Kristen and the kids have, have made. So, our oldest daughter is nine, and I've been involved with the city since 2007. So, you could do the math, it's kind of all they've known. When I told my kids that I wasn't gonna run for reelection, their first, not their first, their first response was, yeah. Then they said, well, we don't get any special parking spots? I'm like, shh, it's a secret. So, would you rather have special parking spots or would you rather dad to be home at night? And they took, took the latter over the former, but. It, it's, it's been an honor. This has been the most rewarding professional experience in my entire life. And I think it's just a testament to the great staff that we've had, the, the great staff we have now. I think we, we're on the track. We've had the best team holistically that we've ever had in the city. And our, not even our first council meeting, but our first, I don't know what we call it, council, presumed council elect, there was a big controversy over what we, what we actually said, was, was held where the, the nail salon, or the, the eyelash place and the Mountain View tires is now, with borrowed chairs and tables. And somebody brought a PA system that was just atrocious in a room full of tile, getting yelled at by some of the residents and not knowing what the heck I was doing. So, coming from there to here in this beautiful space, I think is just the, the testimony of how far we have come. It is, I sincerely appreciate all the gratitude. It was not all me. You know, it was, it was a group effort and collective, and we survived. We survived the budget cuts. We survived all the, the crud that was thrown at us. And even though it was tough, I think we came out stronger. And I'm, I am very honored and proud to, to leave at this point with what we have accomplished. And I'm even more proud to, to raise my family in, in this city 'cause I know what we have and I know what our potential is. So, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Kristen. Thank you for everyone who showed up today. Appreciate it. I'm not gonna do a mic drop or anything, but thank you for your time.
Alright, moving on to item 4.3. Or no, I'm skipping over my own thing here. Item 4.2, presentation to outgoing Mayor Clint Lorimer. Well, on behalf of the city of Eastvale and the, and the staff here, we wanna thank you for all the hard work you put in this last year as mayor. It's been a pleasure.
It's been a pleasure working with you. For those of you that don't know, some of our best conversations happen between 9:30 and 11:30 at night. When I'm heading home from work and so is he. So he works for the Building Industry Association and oftentimes he's at a late-night community meeting and I'm at a late-night community meeting and we're talking about the agenda coming up in the next week. So on behalf of that, we give you a trophy gavel for you to take home and put on your, or take to work and put on your.
This gavel, wasn't it?
I don't know if it was that gavel, but.
I think it changed.
It changed colors. That didn't match the plaque. So thank you very much for your services last year. For a lot of people that don't know, Mayor Clint Lorremore has probably attended every single event possible this last year and highlighted the city in many ways and been to every ribbon-cutting, grand opening and event that there is in Eastville. And so, and not only does he work really hard in Eastville, but he works really hard representing us on many regional boards. If you go to SCAG, everybody, just like they say, do you work with Adam? They say, do you work with Clint? And so, and so he represents Eastville and puts Eastville on the map in the region. And that's no easy task because he's driving into downtown LA and all over the place to help make sure money's coming back here and representing Eastville really well. So thank you very much, Clint.
Thank you.
All right, right here. Ready, one, two, three. And then right here, one, two, three. One, two.
Okay, briefly before moving on to item 4.3, I just wanna say it's been an absolute honor and a privilege to serve as mayor for the past year. That being said, I am very much looking forward to handing off the role to our mayor pro tem, Todd Rigby. I wanna also, well, I wanna thank the community. We would not be what we are without you. And, you know, you are what makes our city great and active and engaged community, particularly those that take time midweek to come out to a council meeting like this. So thank you. And I've said it before, but I will say it again, I wanna thank our city staff. They work very, very hard, work diligently. And those late-night conversations, we get emails late at night too and from city staff around the clock. And they are, we have an amazing team here in town. And we are doing well as a community and city staff makes us look good up here. So really appreciate all the hard work that you guys put in. And also, I wanna thank, well, my girlfriend. I wanna thank my family for putting up with the crazy schedule between work and this. But again, it is surely an honor and a privilege and I would not trade it. So thank you. So moving forward, item 4.3, and that is to accept the declaration of results of the November 6, 2018, general municipal election. And Mr. Aguilar, if you could take us through that.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Lorremore and council members. On November 6, 2018, the city conducted a general election for the purpose of filling two full-term city council member seats in districts 3 and 4. The District 1 election was canceled on August 21, 2018, after the council voted to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Rigby to a four-year term as he was the only candidate to file nomination papers as of the close of the nomination period. On Friday, December 7, the Riverside County Register of Voters certified the election. There were a total of 6,480 ballots casted in the city and a 63% voter turnout this election. Based upon the certification by the registrar, it was declared that the following individuals were elected to the city council: Clint Lorremore in District 3 and Jocelyn Yao in District 4. Staff's recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution reciting the facts of the general municipal election and authorize the city clerk to administer the oath of office to the newly-elected council members. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, first question, have we received any public comments?
We have received no public comment.
Any public comments? Okay, hearing none. Moving forward, I'm gonna turn to the council. Any questions? Discussion? Mr. Rigby?
No.
I would so move as recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Mayor Pro Tem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lorremore?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, all right, done and done. Moving on to item 4.4. And that is the oath of office for myself, Clint Lorremore, city council member, District 3, and Jocelyn Yao, city council member, District 4. Mr. Aguilar.
Yes, Mayor Lorremore, I'd like to invite Ms. Yao up to the speaker's podium. If I could have you raise your right hand and repeat after me, both together, yes. I state your name. Do solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California from all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without, sorry, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations.
Steven, once this happens, we're in memory.
I would like to thank voters of District 4 for electing me here to represent you here. But also, I see some familiar faces. I know some of you here had, were helping me with my campaign and I really appreciate that. But with that being said, you know, all of us here, and myself included, we are here to represent everyone in the city of Eastville regardless of where you live. And that's what we're gonna do. And also, Mr. Rush, I, you may not know this, but I actually got into, I got to know the city of Eastville, the politics, the governance through you, actually, through Twitter, social media. I was still a college student back then and I remember looking up hashtag Eastville and I found you. And I was just looking at it and I learned so much through you since I was in college. And so I really thank you for that. And I wanna say that, you know, it's, anyone can be a politician, but it takes integrity to be a public servant. And you are the definition of a public servant. So thank you so much. And thank you to your family for the sacrifices and everything that you all have done. Thank you so much.
Well said. Okay, we are gonna move on to item 4.5. And that is the office of mayor and mayor pro tem. So, Mr. Aguilar.
Yes, good evening again, Mayor Lorremore and council members. Each year, the council appoints a mayor to serve as mayor and mayor pro tem. The appointments are effective immediately after the motions and the newly-appointed mayor and mayor pro tem will preside through calendar year 2019. At this time, we will entertain motions for the office of mayor.
Excellent. Well, I would like to make a motion that Todd Rigby serve as mayor and that Brandon Plot serve as mayor pro tem.
Second.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Mr. Aguilar, roll call, please.
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorremore, Mayor Lorremore, I apologize.
Well, just had one.
At this point, yes, Mayor Lorremore. Was that a yes?
Aye, yes, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Tassari?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Useable chairs.
That's effective city government that we guessed what you guys were gonna do.
It's because we have an awesome staff.
We also had multiple permutations of backups back here, just in case.
You must be getting ready for bull season, how they print two shirts of each. All right, well, thank you. I'm excited. I'm excited for this. I think as Jocelyn said it, she said it well, that we're appointed in our positions to serve our community. So we're excited as a council, I think I speak on behalf of our council, to serve, we're excited to serve our community and do what we can in representing our residents that are here. So moving on to item 4.6, planning commission appointments. Council, would you like to appoint or change your planning commissions? Start down with Clint, please.
Excellent, yes. I plan on maintaining the Public Safety Commissioner in that he was very recently appointed. I would like to make a new appointment this evening.
Go right ahead.
For the Planning Commission. Okay, and that would be Houston Laney. Mr. Laney, and he's here. Are we gonna swear him in now?
We can see how everybody, then we can bring them all up and swear in all the people at the end.
Excellent. Mr. Plot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, yeah, I would like just to retain both Christian Dinko as my Public Safety Commissioner and for our Planning Commissioner, Josh Lee, as well, just to retain them both. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, I'd also like to reconfirm my appointments, Larry Oblea and Sean Perilla.
Thank you, and Ms. Yao.
Clarification, so is this for planning and Public Safety Commissions or only planning?
We can announce both. We'll probably have to do a motion for separate, since they're separate agenda items.
Yeah, we'll do separate motions, but if you wanna announce them both, you can. So I'll reappoint Mr. Hovey, Andrea Hovey, as my planning, as my new Planning Commissioner. And I'll have Yvonne Varela as my Public Safety Commissioner.
Great, thank you. And I will reappoint mine Planning Commissioner, Daryl Charleston, and Public Safety, Joe Ward. So for 4.1, or I mean 4.6, Planning Commission Appointments, is there a motion, entertain a motion?
So I move.
Second.
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorremore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 4.7, Public Safety Commission Appointments. I'll entertain a motion.
So I move.
Second.
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorremore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Rigby, at this time, I'd like to invite the new commissioners up to the speaker's podium where I can administer the oath of office to both.
So if you're a new commissioner, if you can come up to the front, please. Just so everybody knows, we have a Public Safety Commission next Tuesday night and a Planning Commission next Wednesday night.
Which means we'll be hearing from our office.
Agendas will be posted tomorrow.
Yes. If I could have you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me, I state your name. Do solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California from all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. Congratulations.
A little bit more. One, two, three, one, two, three.
One more right over here? Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Alright, alright, I'll go, move back. One more, one, two, three, one, two, and three. Alright, congratulations to our new commissioners. Um, moving along to item four point eight, city council regional appointments. Um, and we're gonna Starting off with the first one, the Riverside Transit Agency, um, I'm going to, I'll just go through kind of what we have and what I, um, Uh, this is kind of up to mayor's discretion. So, I'm gonna appoint, if there's any discussion or um Any concerns, questions, let me know. So, Brandon Plot, he's actually a chair on one of the committees, so he will continue on that as a delegate. Um, I am as an alternate. W R C O G, Western Riverside Council of Governments. The delegate will be Joe Tassari with Brandon Plot as the alternate. Riverside County Transportation Commission Will be Clint Lorrimore as a delegate, myself as an alternate. Southern California Association of Governments. We will remain the same, Clint Lorrimore as a delegate, Joe S, Joe Tassari as alternate. Um, the Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District, we only have a delegate on that. Do we need an alternate? Is there supposed to be an alternate on that? Do we not need that? Okay. We'll remain that the same with Joe Tassari. Um, Western Community Energy. We're gonna keep that the same, um, as myself as the delegate. I was just Appointed today as uh, the vice chair of that board. Um, and then we'll have Joe Tassari as the alternate. The Eastville Finance Committee. We will have uh Joe Tassari as the primary. Brandon Plot and Clint Lorrimore as an alternate. The Eastville Schools Committee will uh, continue to be myself as primary and Jocelyn Yao as primary. Joe Tassari as an alternate. Um, and then we also have a Public Safety Commission on that that we were going to look into. So, we'll
Yes, Mayor Rigby, I did confirm with the school district that the bylaws do not state that a Public Safety Commissioner is necessary to sit on the board.
Um, at this time, we will not appoint one. We will forego that. The Eastville Parks Commission, we will uh, that will remain the same with uh Brandon Plot as the primary, myself as also primary and um We'll make a change to that with Jocelyn Yao as an alternate. Economic Development Committee, we are actually going to uh, disband at this time. We will not move forward with a, with an Economic Development Committee. We will dissolve that and also the Infrastructure Implementation and Coordination Committee will also be dissolved. Um, Civic Center Library Committee Subcommittee. The two primaries on that will be Clint Lorrimore and Jocelyn Yao. The last one is the Mayor's Business Success Table. We are actually, I am, uh, if it's okay with the council, I'm proposing a change In uh, the name of that to just be the Business Success Roundtable. Um, and that would be the mayor as well as Brandon Plot as the primary. And just so I can just kind of Um, my thought behind changing that from the Mayor's Business Success Table to just the Business Success Table because it's not the mayor that is the success of that. It's I feel it's the council and the businesses. So, I think if we leave it as a Business Success Roundtable Then it just shows that it's a, it's a combination, it's a team effort of the success of our businesses. That is the, the regional and the subcommittees. Um, is there any discussion or any questions, concerns? Comments?
Um, I know I'm new and I understand that all of you here probably have more knowledge about this region and this city than I do. Um, and but I would respectfully request to be placed on at least one of the regional committee, even as an alternate delegate. That would be great.
Yeah. For the, the Riverside Transit Agency, um, Let's have her as the alternate and remove myself from that. Would that be, okay, okay.
Mayor Rigby, uh, for the record was uh, Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Agency.
Oh.
Currently, the delegate is a former council member, Adam Rush, and the alternate serves as Clint Lorrimore.
I'm sorry, that was uh, my fault. I overlooked that one. That one I have as Jocelyn Yao as a delegate. And Joe Tassari is alternate. So, that puts you on two regionals. Sorry about that. I skipped that one. Sometimes it's hard to read my chicken scratch and I skip over a little bit, so I apologize. Any other further discussion on any of these? I would uh, entertain a motion for four point eight, city council regional appointments.
Second.
Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorrimore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Item four point nine, city council subcommittees appointments, I would entertain a motion.
So I move.
Second.
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorrimore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tassari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. That concludes our special meeting. The next Meeting of this Eastville City Council will be today at six thirty. Uh, we'll take a brief break and we will be back here in, let's say, ten minutes.